Hit record on, on Zoom.
Oops, too late. We hit the button, so.
Well, you're live on Facebook. That's fine. Now hit.
It says recording paused, so I assume it is recording.
No, it's paused.
I hit play. Resume recording.
There you go. So you're recording and you're live on Facebook. I think you're good.
Looks good.
Hmm, I think maybe we found the problem with this.
Molly, do you?
Trying to put, you're saying it's me?
I'm not making any aspersions.
I'm admitting people. I don't.
Yep, you're doing it. You're good, Emily. I'm gonna leave. Are you guys good?
I think so. Thank you, Molly.
You're welcome. Have a fun meeting.
Oh, we will.
Keith, how's it going?
Keith, how's it going?
I'm asleep. How are you?
Doing all right. Emily, do we have everyone tonight? Are we down anybody? Steven, maybe?
I have not gotten any, any cancellations notices.
Mr. Hicks told me he would be attending.
Pat, I think we're just waiting on Steven, so if we could just give him a couple more minutes, then we can get going.
Andrew, just record keeping, the conditional approval, the unfinished business, that's the chain link fence we talked about last month. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, I think we put it in unfinished business on the agenda.
Andrew, can you hear me?
Yeah, I got you, Steven.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. I'm having some technical difficulties, so I'm gonna jump on on my phone.
Cool. Pat, it looks like we have everybody. If you'd like to kick it off.
All right, let's do it. Let's call the order, that call the, call the meeting to order. If we get a roll call, please.
Mr. Benner. Mr. Cullen.
Here.
Mr. First.
Here.
Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Mr. Zollers.
Here, thank you. All right, any changes to the meeting, the minutes from July ninth meeting? Okay, hearing that, we'll let those stand as approved. Approved of the agenda. Anything we need to change on here before we get too far into it? All right. Anyone speaking? Andrew, did you know of?
Yeah, we have the two applicants, Ms. Lajewski and Mr. Wiley, both on the call. I think they would be both talking about their applications for tonight.
Okay, well then, before we, again, let's do this. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you give in front of the commission will be truthful? So please answer, I do. You two, please.
I do.
Thank you. Okay, very good. All right, let's go into unfinished business. Emily or Andrew, if you would, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think the first, first unfinished business item was just approving the fence for the caliber collision development, and I believe there was some emails related to the product they would be using, and I can share what was sent over. Just one moment here. So I think we were just looking for a vote on the black chain link with the black, black slats as shown here at the bottom. Bottom right.
Okay, any discussion commissioners? All right, hearing none, I'll entertain the first and the second if this meets with our approval. Anyone? Mr. Banner, Mr. Hicks, anyone wanna?
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and, and approve our condition based on this information that Emily's presented with the powdered chain link fence with the black slats.
Very good. There's the first. How about a second?
Mr. First, I second.
Thank you, Mr. First. Okay, would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Benner.
Yes.
Mr. Cullen.
Yes.
Mr. First.
Yes.
Mr. Hicks.
Yes.
And Mr. Zollers.
Yes. Okay, very good. Okay, new business, number one. Emily, you want to tee this one up for us, please?
Sure. So our first case this evening is for the property at seventy-three forty-five East Main Street. Of course, this is home to Vic's Pizza and soon to be an establishment called eighteen-eighty-three locale, which will be a future event space. The applicant is requesting planning commission approval for exterior building modifications. This is within the old Reynoldsburg Commercial District, and so therefore a COA is required for any kind of exterior modifications. I believe the applicant is on and can maybe go through exactly what some of the proposals entail, but generally speaking, this is, you know, painting, staining the exterior brick, hanging some new signage, new lighting fixtures, new garage and entry doors. I think she'll probably touch on the, I think the window shutters are also being considered. And so with that, I'm happy to send it over to Ms. Lajewski, who I believe is on.
Yes. Thank you, Emily. I think that summed up pretty much what we're hoping to do overall. We are looking at kind of phasing some of this in, so with my particular business, my parents operate Vic's Pizza and own the building. And my husband and I are going to be leasing the space upstairs as an event space. And with our entrance being on the side, in between their garage and their side entrance door, we're just trying to at least work on the back half to start with the cinder block and kind of freshen that up by painting that rust color, a dark gray, and then putting, I apologize that my children are gonna be screaming while I'm on the call. And putting a new garage door that matches our venue door there. When I originally sent this over, I think you might have it, Emily, as far as the black change or the wood change. We did nail down that we are going to do, we're leaning more towards a wooden garage door and a wooden venue door, which you'll see like underneath our logo. And starting there by replacing those two and painting that back half. So we kind of ruled out going with a black garage and a black door, if that clears that up. My photoshopping abilities does not entail the hanging sides sideways. There's a separate PDF for that. But in the process of me trying to clean up the presentation for the venue, I went ahead and designed some signs up for the pizza shop because there's not real clarification that that's our main entrance on the side. So we would like to use the existing pole that's there, which you can see in that present image, and just hang lightweighted aluminum signs off. I think you may have that, Emily. I'm not sure if that's something you can pull up. I think it's a separate PDF. But we would just like to hang that off for clarification. It's double sided, and there would also be one of those hanging off the front of the building as well, off the existing poles that are there. I'll let you guys ask questions before I go on, because I could probably talk too long.
Yeah, any questions from the commission?
Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Hicks.
Yeah, go ahead.
Well, I live right down the street from Vic's. We're in there all the time. And I, I think it's been discussed before. It's such an important building in Reynoldsburg, in the history of Reynoldsburg. It's sort of the, sort of the keystone building. It's like the whole city kind of revolves around that, the old Connell's Hardware Building. And so it's the, you know, I think the, the community has been so supportive of your guys' business moving into that location. It's been fantastic. Everybody loves going there, and I'm really looking forward to you guys sort of taking that next step to advancing the building. I'm glad that you're proposing to stain the brick on the older part of the Connell's Building and not a full paint on that area, because I do think it's important to be able to maintain some of that natural brick look behind it. And I think in, in general, for most buildings around in the historic district of the historic Reynoldsburg, I think we would probably try to lean away from painting brick, unless there's certain instances in which I think it would be warranted. I think with the Connell's Hardware Building, there's kind of a significant amount of variation in the quality of the brick on the existing building and color differences between different parts of the building. And tying in that addition that was done, who knows, in the fifties or something on the back of it, into the main part of the building. I think because of those particular circumstances with the building, I think I would support the staining of the brick. But I would just kind of caution, you know, that maybe the, the doors and some of these other accessory features apart, to make sure we're not getting too modern. I think it's okay for us to, to add some elements to this, some design elements to kind of tie the whole building together. I think would look very nice. But we've got to make sure that's not going too modern, and it looks like you had some variant variability still in what you were trying to do with the doors. And did you say you were, you were leaning more towards like a wood, wood type doors?
Yeah, and my parents actually nailed down a more traditional, it kind of looks barn wood. And I don't have the exact image in this, because that's something they actually finally found one they liked, and it's not modern at all, and I can attest to that, but I will send, send it over to you guys to look at. But it's just like a natural oak color. And then it has just two windows at the top for them to be able to see trucks when they come. And then it has like, you know, the cross for like the barn, just like the diagonal on the sides that give it kind of like the older, more like barn restored look, because they kind of want to go with that hardware restored industrial modern vibe rather than like what I photoshopped is just me like slapping some wood on there, so it's not a, a real like great quality door, because they were really hard to find garage doors that would fit that particular, that is not a standard sized garage door. It's ten by eight. And so I've been through about fifteen companies to find a door that works. And I finally nailed one like literally yesterday morning. So, but it's pretty traditional.
I think that would definitely help, you know, having some traditional elements in there in addition to the staining. Making sure that the stain on the older part of the building's translucent enough that it doesn't look like paint, that it looks like a stain, and you can tell, you know, the shapes of the bricks and all that. Other than, other than that, I, I think it's a great project. I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, and just for clarification, and like, I appreciate you sharing the desire on keeping the brick elements, because that's something we were really concerned about, like trying not to upset the city of Reynoldsburg, because it is such a staple, and the brick really is like, I mean, it's just a part of Connell's history. And we hate to, to honestly have to do anything to it, but with the quality of the brick really deteriorating and needing so much of it to be replaced and penned, the mismatch coloring is only going to get worse. So our solution and like middle ground was to basically try to stain it and at least get it a little more cohesive where those different qualities of bricks didn't stand out.
This is Mr. Zollers. I have two questions. I agree with the doors, Mr. Hicks, I like that. And it sounds like what you're talking about is Lajewski is appropriate. On the stain, two questions on the stain. That is all four sides, right? And that's not just on two sides?
It'll, yeah, it'll be all of the actual brick part of the building.
Okay, four sides?
Yes, like the side you can't see that's close to the, the current yoga studio, that will be stained as well. Yeah, the, the entire building will be stained.
Okay, all right. And then on this picture that we're looking at, I'm not sure what you're saying. It looks like some sort of paper, or what you call wallpaper on that. What is that?
So all I did was show the stain color, and I think you can see that at the bottom kind of applied onto the brick repeated, but that, the Westchester gray is, it's a concrete stain. And we were told that we could also more or less like water that stain down so that it wouldn't be as thick, and it would help retain some of like those brick tones as well, and wouldn't be as dark, so.
Okay, the, the picture we're looking at, it looks like it's, that's just brick. You're just showing that it's stained brick. That's not a design that you're adding to this or anything.
No, you can see here the sample that she has pulled up of what that stain actually looked like when it's applied.
I'm good, I'm with you. That's fine.
Yeah. And while she has the front pulled up to, this is something that I kind of had a hard time presenting to you guys, because not sure how else to, to say what we want to do. But the front of our building, the wood is starting to rot and peel where it has a lot of character. You can't really find many people to do the curved wood and things like that. I am happy that I actually found a, a wood crafting person who's going to come in and just basically retain everything that's there, sand it, and then if something cannot, if something can't be kept, then he's just going to remold it and literally keep it the same exact shape. Which is really what we were hoping to maintain the character of some of like the curves and embellishments. And we're just keeping that front white and just basically gonna clean it up where it's rotted.
Any other questions for Mrs. Jaski?
Yeah, so I have a comment and a question. I, I do appreciate that you're trying to keep the historical woodwork. I also live right down the street and have a house with a, a lot of historical woodwork, so I appreciate the, the challenge that's presented there with trying to maintain that. Just for, my question is just for clarity, we are approving here the change in the exterior coloration of the building, the shutters, doors. It looks like you're gonna be adding a sign for the eighteen-eighty-three locale, also signage for Vic's. And then some exterior lighting fixtures. Does that accurately summarize what you're trying to accomplish with this project?
Yeah, I would say most immediately would be the signs, making sure that we're, because those would probably go up first because they're most needed. The signs being the first, and then the second being the garage door and our venue door and the, at least the cinder block part going gray.
Very good. All right, any other questions?
I think just one more thing that I'd like to add to, and Christine, correct me if I'm wrong, you're still gonna take the, the blocks out front, the landscaping bricks to create more of that cafe space too, right?
That is definitely something we want to do. We're just not sure if that's something we should attack, like maybe once you guys are, are working on the sidewalks more, if that's something we should go ahead and do now. That was kind of something we need to figure out, but that definitely would be the goal of taking it out.
Just for reference, everyone understands what we're talking about. Main Street is getting an overhaul next year, so at the end of next year, right in front of Vic's, they're probably gonna have anywhere between twelve and sixteen foot sidewalks, all new brick pavers, really nice pedestrian oriented zone. So the idea is, is they're gonna get rid of some of the landscaping that's out of the front to create more of a cafe type space, the more outdoor seating, which is gonna be really great. And I don't think this is the last time that we're gonna see, Christine, I, I know she has other bigger plans, which is great for the city. And we were gracious enough to have a tour of the building, and I, I cannot wait until the new event space is open, because the upstairs, if you think it looks good downstairs, wait till you go upstairs.
Cool.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
If I could just ask a quick question, Ms. Lajewski, it seems like several times I've heard that you're, this is going to be a phased situation. You're simply going to paint the rear section first. Do you have a timetable to complete all of this project?
Um, I would say most immediately, meaning the next six to eight weeks, I would like to see the back half done. For our sake, so that when I start touring people and booking a year and two years out, I have our portion of the building representing like our modern, more cleaned up area. And then the issue that we're having with actually starting to stain the brick on the outside is whether you can tell or not, there is a ton of pinning and work to do on the brick itself. They have to go in and fill the mortar, and we do not know how long that's gonna take, but they should be able to start on that in the next six weeks. Which could potentially with the weather, it just depends. If they get done in time, hopefully fall. If not, we might have to wait until the weather breaks.
Good question, good question, Mr. Banner. If no other questions or comments, let's have a first and a second motion, please.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, this is Mr. Hicks. I'd, I'd like to move for approval under the condition that some form of submittal is submitted by the applicant to staff in regards to the wood doors that have been discussed in the meeting for a staff approval.
It's Mr. First. You second Mr. First?
Yes.
Very good. Okay, we have a first and a second. Emily, would you call the roll on this, please?
Uh, Mr. Benner?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. First?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
And Mr. Zollers.
Yes. All right, very good. Looking forward to this change. That'd be nice.
Thank you.
Very good. Okay, Emily, what's number two? Very good. Okay, um, Emily, what's number two all about, if you would, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our second case this evening, uh, is for a major site plan, application number twenty-twenty dash five-three-one-three. Uh, this is at the property address two-three-six-four Taylor Park Drive. Uh, the applicant is requesting major site plan approval, uh, for the construction of a new, uh, approximately five thousand square foot, uh, Chick-fil-A restaurant with a dual drive-through lane and indoor and outdoor seating. Uh, the existing building, which is the, uh, Logan's Steakhouse, will be demolished as part of the development. Uh, the, the property is within the community commercial zone. And, uh, I don't know if any of you were around at the time, but the, the proposed development was, um, I think in twenty-eighteen did go before the, uh, BZBA for a special exception use. Um, and the development does comply with, uh, the current CC district, um, in terms of the building height, lock coverage, um, rear setback requirements, um, and is also consistent with, um, uh, some of the existing surrounding, uh, parcels and development along Route two fifty-six. Uh, there's of course the McDonald's just north of there, um, and access, uh, to the site, uh, pull up the site plan. Access to the site will remain unchanged, though, could basically be preserving the existing curb cuts there along Taylor, um, Taylor Park Drive. Um, and with that, I know the applicant is on and perhaps would like to add to that and speak a little bit more about the proposal.
Uh, one second before we do that. Um, Emily, on the application, you have the typed addresses two-six-three-four. And to the right of that, you have a written address, two-three-six-four. Let's make sure we got the right address for the record, if we could.
Yeah, so it's two-three-six-four. Uh, I believe that was a typo on the initial application.
Okay, okay, that, okay, go ahead. Applicant, you, uh, wanna add anything or share some information?
Yeah, thank you very much, Emily. That was a, you gave a lot of great background information. Uh, Chick-fil-A had this project previously approved a couple of years ago. Uh, Logan's, uh, steak, or Logan's Road House, uh, decided not to move out when Chick-fil-A purchased the property. So Chick-fil-A was their landlord for a little while. Logan's has since gone away, so this project is coming back on board. Uh, we're before you tonight because we modified the site plan slightly, uh, due to the recent COVID, um, issues that we have worldwide. Chick-fil-A's drive-through has slightly changed, so they have now added, uh, two lanes almost all the way through, definitely past the building. And then this one, they're actually gonna, uh, have one lane coming out of the drive-through into the parking lot. Uh, so we, the site plan is essentially the same, other than just adding a little bit more additional pavement at the drive-through there so that they can speed up, uh, to pick up, or people picking up their orders at the window.
Uh, commissioners, questions, comments, anything?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, um, I do have a question for the applicant. I, I know that the traffic stacks at the Chick-fil-A location on, on Broad Street considerably. Uh, and you have added some, some volume here to the, the drive-through, but is there any concern at, at peak hours? That, do you have a number on what the estimated, uh, traffic is there at, at peak? You know, I'm concerned that it, it might stack into the, uh, the entry pull-off from Taylor there.
I do not have a number. I do know that this building will have a much larger kitchen than the one on East Broad does. Uh, it will be much more efficient than the one on East Broad does because of the larger kitchen. It will actually have a, uh, door instead of a pickup window. So at the, uh, pickup window, there's a canopy over that area now. And they are actually gonna have people out there running orders to the customers as they get up to the window. Um, they'll have two lanes at the pickup window. We only show, uh, cars in one lane. But the reason for that additional pavement on the outside is so they can actually run two full lanes all the way through the pickup window and then funnel down to one. Uh, we show, I think I just counted twenty cars from the pickup, from the order station to the end of the drive-through. We can probably fit another ten cars in the parking lot before you even get to Taylor Drive. That's a thirty-car stack to the order station. I would say that, uh, that number of cars along with the improvements in the kitchen and the drive-through, I, I don't foresee traffic being an issue at this location in normal, normal hours.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mr. First, I will add to, uh, when this applicant first came, they did do a full traffic study with this plan. Um, and obviously they have since added additional measures to help with that. And then Violet Township was also notified them having a fire station so close, uh, there being some concerns, obviously not wanting to back up. Uh, they were fine with the original plan. This one is even better because of the stacking. So we feel very confident that this is actually even a better, uh, way forward than what it was in the past.
Ah, excellent. That's good news.
Uh, Mr. Bowser, this is Mr. Hicks. Um, I kind of shared the same concern as Mr. First, but you know, examining the site plan and the amount of drive, uh, stacking spaces they've done to seem to accommodate that. But what does our code require as far as number of stacking spaces required for a drive-through? I'm imagining this is, uh, far exceeding our code requirement.
It does. We require, I think it's eight, maybe it's nine, but it's, um, certainly less than what is shown here.
So I, I do appreciate the applicant taking, uh, belt and suspenders approach to the, the drive-through stacking issue. And, uh, you know, I mean, I, if they can't make that many work, then they, they definitely have a problem in the kitchen or something.
Very good. I agree. Uh, Mr. Benner, anything?
I apologize, Mr. Chairman. I wondered if the applicant had any, um, uh, ideas on when this might start?
Yes, so currently construction is scheduled to start, um, in beginning of April, twenty-twenty-one. Uh, it'll be open early September. Uh, Chick-fil-A is currently planning on demolishing the existing Logan's Building, uh, later this year, uh, potentially a, a nine, a nine-one start for that demo work.
Thanks, sir.
Okay.
You're welcome.
I have a question regarding the parking lot. That is the existing parking lot, so most of that's gonna be retained. Is that why it's so large? Or is that to require?
No, we are actually gonna demolish the entire parking lot and relay it out, uh, cause the Logan's Building sits right in the middle of the existing parking lot there. Um, the number of spaces we have shown is what Chick-fil-A believes they need in order to properly serve the building.
Okay, very good. Uh, Mr. Cullen and Mr. Uh, First, any, any additional comments?
No, I don't. I mean, it's very similar to what came back a couple of years ago, the planning commission.
Okay, um, well, with that then, uh, I'd entertain a first followed by a second, if we could.
Uh, this is Mr. Hicks. I move that we approve the application as submitted.
Just a, I'm sorry, just a quick point of, uh, clarification. On, on your motion to approve, you'll need to add a condition that they go before, uh, the BZBA. They'll need, uh, a variance for the various front, side and back setbacks.
I'd like to amend my motion. I hereby move that we approve as submitted, conditional upon the applicant, uh, gaining approval from BZBA for setback amendments, setback variances.
I'll second.
Okay, very good. We have a first and a second. Um, staff, would you, uh, call the roll on this, please?
Uh, Mr. Benner?
Yes.
Mr. Cullen?
Yes.
Mr. First?
Yes.
Mr. Hicks?
Yes.
And Mr. Zollers?
Yes. Very good. Okay. Congratulations. Thank you.
Hey, Alan, while I've, while I've got you still on this, in light of that new news, we have a meeting on the twentieth of August with the information that we already have. If you could work with Emily, we'll get that other application in for the BZBA. We'll put you on there. It gives us enough time and enough, um, uh, notice requirement right now, uh, to put you on that application so we can just continue moving forward. And then you and I, we can schedule a meeting to sit down with our, our civil team, uh, to start working on your site plan layout, uh, so you can get prepared. So you are ready to go March, April timeframe of next year and break ground. We don't wanna stop or impede any of the progress that you guys are, are making. We know that you've already had to wait for so long to get this project started. We don't wanna, uh, hinder it any further.
Okay, I appreciate that. I'll reach out to Emily tomorrow.
Very good. Okay, guys, any other business we need to talk about? Okay, excellent.
Did we set a date for a, uh, special meeting? Were we needed to do a special meeting?
Yeah, if we could, I, I, I don't know what the, the full consensus was, but there, there was an applicant that would like to start, um, start his project in, uh, late September. So the first September meeting wouldn't give him enough time to get through, uh, the building process. Uh, so they were requesting, uh, so we at least have one full applicant. We just got the application today. So they would like to, to have some meeting towards the end of August, whether it's the third week or the fourth week. I, I leave that up to the planning commissioners, and we may even have a second and third applicant as well.
Well, I would be fine with doing a meeting if we wanna do it right after the BZBA or before. I don't know what time they start on the twentieth. Uh, figured that would, it might be, I don't know if that would be better for staff to be able to get both meetings done in the same night?
I'll just, uh, just to pipe in real quick on that, um, I think it would be more convenient to do them on the same night. I will caution that the BZBA meeting that evening could be a little bit longer than normal. I think there's a lot on the agenda so far, including, um, a, a potentially contentious, um, uh, code issue.
What time does that meeting start? It's a supply.
How about the twenty-seventh then?
Emily, any objections to that?
Uh, that works for me. That works.
Is that good for everybody else?
Well, the next move would be September third. I mean, could we just move our September third meeting to the twenty-seventh or set a special meeting for the twenty-seventh and then cancel our meeting on the third?
Yeah, we put, we could potentially do that. Um, well, let's do that then. Let's go ahead and mark it for September, or excuse me, August twenty-seventh, like you had said. Uh, let's go with that and then we'll make it, um, on that date, we'll, we'll either cancel the next following meeting or maybe we'll have an applicant by then. So we'll, we'll just play that by ear.
Okay.
But that'll give us seven days for notice as well.
Everybody else good with that? Mr. Cullen, then? You good?
Yep.
Okay.
That meeting, will that meeting be at six also?
Yes, we'll do it via Zoom as well, cause if we did do it the night of BZBA, because we would be in-house because of the legality of the BZBA meeting, we would have to have everybody in, and it may be hard for some of these applicants, cause some of them are, are, are not here local. Um, so this way on the twenty-seventh, we'll still do a Zoom meeting. It'll just be a special one.
Okay. That sounds like a, uh, sounds like a plan. Let's do that then. Okay. Anything else? All right, guys. Appreciate it, guys and gals. Thank you very much. Good meeting. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.